Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the town work session of Tuesday, March fifth, twenty twenty four. The board has been an executive session discussing hiring and specific departments appointments in our boards and commissions and legal advice from the town attorney. May I have a motion to close the executive session and open the work session?
Second, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye. Alright, so we have a relatively short work session tonight. We're going to start with the draft of a local law to amend the provisions of chapter forty eight, building construction and fire prevention and chapter sixty eight, fire prevention. Who wants to get started, Lina?
Sure, thank you for taking this. Thank you, supervisor, members of the board. This is a draft local law that I've worked on with thanks to Tom, Paul, your building inspector. This local law amends chapter forty eight and chap which is titled building construction and fire prevention and chapter sixty eight, which is the fire prevention code. And really what we're looking to do is we're looking to kind of get ahead of electric vehicles, batteries and chargers. So what this local law does, it amends those two chapters to provide us basically certain safety protocols when it comes to new construction and installation of EV chargers, batteries. One of the things that we added was a definition of what constitutes an electric vehicle. It's pretty broad, so there was a discussion about scooters or lithium ion batteries. So we add that definition in beginning of chapter forty eight dash twenty nine with respect to what the EV is defined as. And then we also just made a change to chapter sixty eight regarding when fire sprinklers are supposed to be installed, particularly for new construction when you have an EV charger in the home. So, Tom, did I miss anything or that's pretty much the gist of it?
That's the gist of it. There was the placarding and the standby battery energy or generator for the fire sprinkler systems.
Yeah, the placards, so that was a good point, thanks Tom. We were requiring for new construction or even homes that are doing renovations that install these items to have some type of placard on the side of the house. So God forbid in case there are fire, that our fire department may know and first responds that there are batteries or EV, you know, car or equipment in this house. So kind of like when you have the trust rods, you know, when you have those on those placards on the side of the home, it'll have it for this as well, so that's one of the parts.
And.
Lino, just to add, this goes through commercial too.
Yeah, commercial too, thanks Robbie.
Did we check with the fire chief?
Uh, yes, Paul, Iden and Greg Santone looked over this very extensively and thank Tom, myself and Lino for going over this. And a couple items that they added, we're very happy with this. I know Paul was very happy with some of the things that Lino put in, especially geared towards the fifty North Greeley project that'll be underway.
Okay. And could you explain a little bit more just for our residents on the part, the requirements regarding new construction?
Sure.
The fifty percent so that people can understand, you know, when they're planning renovations, what exactly
Sure, so.
are responsibilities would be.
Sure, so for, for, this is really for chapter sixty eight for sprinkler requirements, so I'll just write off here. So any new home, and I stress it's new or new garage containing an EV or an EV charger constructed after the local, you know, date of this law and becomes effective when it's passed and filed with the Secretary of State shall require a fire sprinkler system to be installed, again, for new construction. And any building constructed after the effective date of this law shall have a fire sprinkler approved by the fire inspector and fire marshal that's duly authorized representative before any installation. And then the last part talks about the fifty percent. So for any construction or renovation to an existing structure that's not new, when expansion or increase in FAR, which is floor area ratio or height, reconstruction or renewal and for the purpose of its maintenance or in combination where within a two-year period exceeds fifty percent of the building's existing gross floor area, the entire building except for crawl spaces shall be equipped with fire sprinklers. So you have to exceed, exceed that fifty percent threshold in order for any existing structure to require sprinklers.
Alright, does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yeah?
Um, the, for the placards, is there a reason why it's only required on new construction and wouldn't apply to existing? Is that a big ask of property owners?
I think we're just, we're including it. So here we says here, any, any structure which contains EV chargers, solar panels, this is subsection forty nine, forty eight dash twenty nine D. It says any structure which contains EV chargers, battery storage must have aluminum placarding signs displayed on side of the structure. So it's not.
Oh, so it does apply anything?
Yeah, does apply.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you had said it was pretty true. And so this is only for specific chargers. So if you're, because I think I had asked you this before. It's if someone's just doing a plug-in hybrid in their garage, that doesn't count because it's not a specific higher voltage charger? Or is it the fact that there's a battery in the garage?
So if, if you're not a new structure, okay, if it's an existing home, you have an EV charger, you're required to put the placarding on the side.
Yeah.
But, and so the sprinkler requirement kicks in for new construction. For this, this, if it's a, we really look targeting, you know, battery op like cars, scooters, motorcycles that have, you know, battery lithium ion batteries. And that's really what we're looking at, so.
So if, so then, then I guess that leads me to another question is wouldn't you want to have the placard on a house even if it doesn't have a charger? But if they are charging an electric vehicle in that garage? Because you, there are some that you can plug into a regular outlet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and the definition of EV is pretty broad enough so that if our building's proper and fine sprinkler must compel that to add that placard, you can do it. Because the EV is defined as a vehicle that can be powered by an electric motor that draws electricity from a battery, can be of being charged from an external source.
Yeah, I'm just looking at section D because it, it specifies chargers, roof panels or energy storage systems. Or does the energy storage system encompass the car?
No, no, so EV charger, solar and battery energy storage system is a different item. It's not inside the car, right? BESS, that's just battery storage. I see those, some of those are outside of the homes. And I've also seen those in terms of a standalone, like a megawatt facility battery. But when I talk about it, we're talking about a single, like, home BESS charger.
Okay. So maybe, let me get like hyper-specific so that I can, because I think that might help. If I have a plug-in hybrid
Right.
that I park in the garage and it has a, you know, like a three-pronged plug that I plug into a regular outlet, I don't have a special charger installed,
Right.
but I am plugging the car into the house in the garage, do I need a placard?
My, I would say you do need a placard because you have an EV vehicle in the house.
Okay. Okay. Um.
If it catches fire, we want.
So it's more the vehicle than it is the actual charger?
Yeah, I'm just, section D, I think, just, just take a look at the wording because I'm, I'm not sure it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair because it's, it's talking about the structure that has an EV charger, the type of charger, when it's not just the type of charger, it's what's being charged.
So we could, you could say any.
Yeah, or special indoor vehicles.
Now you get that, you get the period, but the I, the I, you get the.
Yeah, but it's an indoor.
Yeah, if we just, that'll solve that problem.
That's right, that's fair because this.
No, Jen has a good point. If we just add EV chargers or EV.
Andor vehicles.
Andor EV vehicles.
Yeah.
That's all you need to add there, they don't, they don't.
Yeah.
Make it all right.
Yep.
Good job.
Thank you.
Would you guys have a plug-in?
Thank you, Jen, thank you Rob. If so, if, so if the board.
Not good carryover though.
If the board's inclined, if they're, and by the schedule hearing, I will just schedule it subject to that change. I'll just add in subsection forty eight dash twenty nine D, after EV chargers, also EV vehicles. That should take care of that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for making that a very question.
No, no, it's, it's a good point.
No, um, thank you for that change.
That was a good job.
And we didn't, you know, go over that, but yeah.
Yeah.
We leaned it down.
Button it down. Well, I think once we saw that, it was like, we called up.
Well, the last time, it's new, we didn't have the definition. So the definition now is, is it starts off that section.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we're missing the last time.
Okay.
Okay, so then.
Anyone else have any?
Then we are eager to freaking set a public hearing subject to the, you know, okay.
If you're honest, we're gonna.
If the V F board's inclined.
Is that one of the things we were gonna do tonight?
Yeah. Thanks, Jen.
So, um.
Schedule a public hearing.
Is there any part of sixty eight dash one five that's determined, that's new?
Sixty eight one C, that's.
Number five. Sixty eight dash one into number five. Is there anything new about that?
No, that's, that's the same, that didn't change unless.
So that's exactly the same as it was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So Jill, what makes sense for the public hearing? Would we have anything next week for a public hearing?
You gotta publish it though.
You have to publish it, so it's gotta be no less than five, no more than thirty.
Yeah.
Ten, oh thirty, right, but this, and it's not a zoning law, so it doesn't need referral Gmail, so it's.
But we would, yeah. We would probably put it on to the twenty sixth of March. Okay, so we could do that.
Do you have time?
Yeah, so we would have both the stormwater and the and this for the, for the twenty sixth. If we do it next week, would we have that time?
To post it, to, it's, whatever the paper says, that's a question, see she knows, she's got it.
Robbie, Tom, go.
I think so, guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Alright guys, hang on, Tom, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and twenty sixth is a meeting, it's not just work session.
Right, the twenty sixth is a town board meeting, so, yeah, so that would work for us.
It's a town board meeting.
I just don't know if we waited until next week to set it, whether or not we have enough time for the, the twenty sixth, it's cutting it a little close. Let's just see the rest we have on the twenty sixth. Yeah, I mean, we could do it. Alright, so maybe we'll just add it to the, the resolutions tonight. Lauren, would we be able to add to the resolutions tonight authorization to set the public hearing for or the local law to amend provisions of chapter forty eight and sixty eight as amended?
Sure, do you want to just add it to the consent agenda and just?
Yes.
When you go to approve it, just add the tenth item.
Okay. Okay.
Can we get it through in March twenty sixth, is it a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so.
We're just gonna move on to administrative items. Christine is gonna come in with copies of the water rent so that we can show it to the board and explain to them what exactly they are.
Okay.
It's just, it's just a little bit easier to, to understand it.
Okay.
Alright, the first thing we have is, um. First thing we have is payment of claims, checks dated March sixth, twenty twenty four. Next one is gonna leave for Rob. But basically, at the end of every calendar year, because our fiscal year runs with the calendar year, we're able to pass a resolution that gives Rob the ability to basically even out the accounts. Some accounts were a little bit overdrawn, some accounts, so we've got a little bit of a balance in them, basically just throw out. There are specific accounts that he cannot do that for, just generally it has to be a specific deposit or adjustment, and those are for contingency funds. So if you take a look in the packet, you'll see that there are. Um, you'll notice that Rob has put, it's actually page four. Out of the general fund, there are specific entries for each of the lines. Those are contingencies, but he actually has to calculate them out. And those are specifically directed ones that he will be asking permission, authorization to transfer. So it's supposed to it being just a blanket transfer, you know, even everything out. He literally has to give you the calculations, so. That's what this is for. And this is done basically to close out the year. So it's done beginning of March every year.
Is that preparation for the audit?
It, it's one of the, yeah, many things, steps he does. But it basically, it closes the year and then the audit comes in and just reviews everything. Next is authorization to approve the IMA, which is a quick little abbreviation for intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County regarding the mobile subscriber radios. And so we take and we do this with Westchester County, it's one of the shared services. Next is authorization to purchase three police vehicles. Next is an authorization to purchase preventative maintenance service for two ozone air compressors for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant.
Jill, the, the three, the three vehicles, is that related to the schools?
Um, it isn't specifically, but it will mean that we actually have vehicles if it turns out that we can have some of those.
I also have, yeah.
So it's covered, so, yay.
Okay, very good.
And do, do they actually exist? I know there's.
Yeah, no, they actually, yes, they, they, yes, they actually exist and we're very excited.
Okay.
Chief is just like gloating over the prospect that he's gonna be getting through the cars, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. We're trying not to say anything too loudly about it. Next is authorization to purchase a generator cable for the emergency standby generator for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Utilizing services of Amway Partners who is, oh, Soul Store of Solness. Fabulous news, the new emergency standby generator was delivered today. It is physically on the concrete slab at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant.
Great.
It will take several months for us to connect everything and be able to disconnect the rental that we've used, but we are so much closer to not having a rental anymore and not having the costs that begle along with it. This is being a tremendous, yeah.
Yeah. Take us all.
And for a long though.
Mm-hmm.
It was two years.
But when I'm last.
Eighteen months to do, yeah, actually, yeah.
I said it was two years.
Yeah.
You're right, it's crazy. Yeah, it probably was two years from the time it actually, um.
Yeah, went boom.
Yeah, the oval went boom and, yeah. So by the time we got specs for the new one and actually had it, yeah, two years.
Okay.
Okay.
Still not up and running, but really close. Also, in anticipation of our audit, we are asking for authorization to close the capital project for the performing arts center roof replacement project and the Guinea Park retainment and stair replacement project as well. Next, we have an authorization to accept donation of services from Newcastle baseball and softball. I really can't say enough about this, this concern. They have been such fabulous partners to us. And our kids are the, you know, the very happy beneficiaries of it. They're, they're just, they're wonderful. We wouldn't be able to be able to do these dedications without their, this is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're so appreciative.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, really fabulous. And the next is authorization to set a public hearing regarding changes to the stormwater requirements that we spoke about last week. And last but not least, we will be adding another authorization to set another public hearing regarding chapters of forty eight and sixty eight that we just discussed earlier. Are we?
Okay.
Yeah, alright.
We can, I can begin the conversation.
Go ahead, start the conversation.
Okay, so.
Alright, this is our second topic.
It's our second topic regarding adding delinquent water rents as tax lien. So some of the new board members may not be familiar with the process. Town of Newcastle, we don't shut off water. So somebody doesn't pay, we don't go out to the house and shut off water. Our recourse to get that payment is to add it to your tax bill. So that process happens, the tax bills come out in April. In early February, we send a letter approximately thirty days prior to the, to tonight to remind people that have delinquent water rents. Payments trickle in, they're coming in fast and furious right now, even though we told them the date was last week. They dropped that date, but we're still getting them in, which is why the report was a late addition because we took stuff to the bank yesterday in order to run the report today and we got more payments today. So we're actually not approving that, we can strike it from the consent agenda. We're approving the final one next week. We always do kind of a preliminary just to show the board kind of what we're talking about, so.
Could you answer this because I've said this every year, and I don't know if I'm a bad influence, but when I, when I started doing it, I was told to just let it go onto my tax book.
A lot of people do.
So I just.
You'll see the same means year after year.
But, yeah, because I was told, without naming names, years ago, just to let it go, it's gonna have no difference, just let it go onto your tax book. So what?
It's a penalty.
So there's a ten percent penalty for paying it late, so that, that is included. But there's no surcharge. There could be a surcharge, the board has never elected to have an additional surcharge. A lot of municipalities, you know, I, I don't know if you're familiar with that or could comment on that, but I do know that other municipalities have a service charge, an additional seventy-five hundred bucks or something like that if you're re-leaving. We, we have never done that, the board has never been inclined to do that. So what we do is take anything that was a hundred and eighty days old as of March first, as of the, the final date. And so that's anything that was delinquent as of October first.
And Rob, what percentage you think of the municipality does that with their, that it rolls into the tax book?
Percentage? I can't give you a number, but this report I think has about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars on it.
How many?
And what's the average bill?
Um, the average bill is probably close to a thousand, probably six, eight hundred dollars. Average, you get some that are several, one, two, three thousand dollars.
That's a lot.
We, we only run this report for anything that's over a hundred dollars delinquent.
Is there an electronic way to pay the bill?
There is an auto debit, yep. And in fact, Patty in my office frequently when people call in, we send this out on a, on bright blue paper. So when you get it, you kind of see it stands out. From the Town of Newcastle envelope, bright blue paper, and people see this. And we kind of shock them with the wording, it's gonna be a tax lien, and people call. Some people call and say, I don't want a tax lien, what do I have to do? And, and then we say, we offer, well, we've got direct debit, you can, you know, sign up for that, the payments, you still will see a copy of your bill, but it'll be drafted from your bank account on the due date every month and, or every quarter and you can avoid that. So we do, but as Jeremy said, there's a lot of people that just, year after year, just leave it on there. I've been doing this now seventeen years and, you know, there's probably a good fifteen people that I could pick out on site that I see every year that just don't pay it and let it roll over their tax book.
But it, it's a couple hundred.
Oh, is it?
People.
Yeah.
Yeah, like between two and three hundred people.
Yeah. I'm telling them, because when I, when I, I remember being told, just let it roll over to your tax book.
So is that number staying level or do you see this increasing?
This looks to be bumped up a little bit from last year. I think last year was in the high eighty thousands. Right now, it sits at about a hundred and twelve, but I did mention we received several payments today. I would expect to receive several more payments throughout the week. So that number, maybe it would drop to below a hundred thousand, I'm not sure, but it does seem a little bit higher than that.
Do you have any sense as to whether these people are unaware just not making the choice or misinformed like Jeremy did?
Well, I mean, I think people are aware to.
But there's a penalty associated with it.
There's a penalty, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it, it goes on your tax bill, although with the salt deduction being limited.
Right, that's.
It's not particularly effective anymore. I mean, it, it used to be you were able to write that amount off. Most people in town probably have a bill in excess of ten thousand dollars, so it's, doesn't do them any good at this point.
Does the penalty goes on to their tax bill as well?
Yep, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we also, there's a, a, Christine is distributing two documents to you. Town of Mount Kisco, we, we have a few water accounts within Newcastle that are Town of Mount Kisco residents and receive water from the Town of Newcastle and they have no recourse since the tax bills come from Newcastle if they're delinquent in Mount Kisco. So, so we will add it to our tax bill and remit that to Mount Kisco. We did that as a courtesy to them.
Oh, okay.
Some other municipalities don't share in that courtesy with us.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine, I'm just gonna share with them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can tell you right now that, that there are frequent flyers.
That one?
Yeah, every single.
Yeah, he's on there.
Yeah, from Mount Kisco, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the second one I don't know.
So basically what we do is we add a separate line to your tax bill that says water rent and it will have this.
Okay.
The stick next to it.
So are you recommending that we stick to what we've been doing?
Yeah, it's a, it's a town code that we do this, and I, I know municipalities do this when I lived in Hyde Park.
Yeah, I.
So we'll dig somewhere.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, they did it in Hyde Park. I'm in the range, but I have well water, so I, I don't think they do it there.
I mean, if people are aware and it aids in us collecting and seems.
Yeah, as I mentioned, we really don't have any other recourse if we're not gonna shut the water off.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, so this is our best recourse, there's really no better alternative, right, so.
Oh, yeah.
So you're saying that the, the Mount, the Town of Mount Kisco rolled charges, adds this to their town?
They asked us to add it because their residence is a new town.
Is, and then.
Sorry.
You say you're on a.
So this Newcastle resident who's receiving water from Mount Kisco.
Yeah.
So they have a rear, a water rear, they have no way of paying.
Oh, so.
They can collect it.
Yeah, so we collect it and then.
For them and then you verse them. Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think I should consider, I'm sure, I don't understand, maybe we should consider a.
Alright. Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's no big deal, but at the same time.
It, it's a lot.
If we educate people, if we educate people, because again, I did this and I thought I even still was, and it is not.
It's me, I work.
Like I did this for years because that's what I was told to do it.
But you were paying a penalty.
I, you know, I did.
You didn't realize.
I realized it was rolling over onto my taxes.
Yeah, but you know, when it was a salt deduction, it was just, it was a little bit of a bigger deduction, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it didn't make a little bit of. Yeah.
Ah, ah, I see, but.
Well, this is what I would say, I'd say let's watch until next year, let's see if these numbers bump up. And if they do, if there's some, for some reason, an upward trend, maybe because there are a lot of new people in town, a lot of people just moved in, they might not be as aware.
The number's fairly steady.
I recognize an awful lot of names on my list, I don't think it's new people.
Okay. Yeah.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay, well, well, the point is if, if the numbers are steadily increasing, then we'll see, I, I don't think we can really tell. I mean, I'm sure it goes up and down.
It does.
Yeah.
When they get the item, the line on the tax bill that says water rents, does it outline the penalty separately or is it a penalty?
No.
Okay, I mean, that's something that, I mean, to people who not realize.
It is.
So.
You do, you do.
I'm just trying to.
I mean, we could, we could make it clear about that.
There's.
I mean, could we?
Not on the tax bill, there's no.
No, on the tax bill, there's, there's.
No.
Please think clearly, the bill. There's a, a very formulaic way to lay out a tax bill. Everybody's tax bill is the same, it's kind of tied state law.
Right. Okay.
And so, you know, it's your county, county, it's your town, it's your county, it's your special districts, it's your refuges, it's the water rents, and so there is, yeah, special district, yeah.
Special district, yeah.
And so there, there is, so you know, your fire departments, things like that, fire, you know, C-Back, not C-Back, Advanced Life Support, ALS. And so, you know, as I, I may have explained in the past, there are very limited additions that we can make to a tax bill. Basically, it's on the very back of the tax bill, we try to give people as much information, yeah. But we're not allowed to insert anything to a tax bill. You can't put another fry or something, even if it's like, you know, organ donor card, nothing like that can be in the tax bill. And we're not allowed to add any superfluous language to the tax bill. It's very specific as to what we can.
The penalty is pretty small too.
It's because it's a hundred and eighty days.
It's time.
Yeah.
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 Like the liquidity, we don't really let these things get out of hand.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can explain this in the newsletter and more people would, would know about it who don't.
Yes.
So.
I know some people like me who thought in the past that I was putting in my tax bill, so I knew it
Right.
and I just thought it would be invented without the salt deduction.
Okay, well, maybe we could just put a little blurb in the newsletter to, and, and see how many people that read this and that might make a difference.
Is there a way to add to the newsletter enrollment to the automatic? Oh, yeah, order, the order to it.
Yeah. Probably is, our, our website notes that. In the water department, I think, and in the controller's office is.
Yeah.
We could put like a little blurb in and says, if, if you're on your tax bill, you happen to see a line that says water rents, this means. And to avoid the ten percent penalty enrolled here. Yes, you.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, the folks who's, okay, could you prepare an appropriate? Yeah, the folks whose, um, okay, could you prepare an appropriate, whatever, we can talk about it.
Yep.
And drop something with a with a proper link and.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Laura.
Yeah, if in, if an mortgage company is paying their tax bills, do they see the same information, or would they be unaware because it would just, you know?
No, I mean, they would, they would see it, they would have to pay, they would have to pay the whole bill.
They could.
At least they had a copy of it.
Yeah.
Um and and ultimately, what would end up happening is your escrow account would get reanalyzed at some point, because they wouldn't expect that bill and you'd end up, you know.
Cause it's gonna be higher than. Because we tell them about their taxes, but we don't tell them about the additional charges.
Yeah.
So if it's a thousand dollars more than you, your escrow needs to recover that, so there'll be an adjustment, these are.
Right, your escrow is usually a hundred and twenty five percent of what we're expecting, but.
Yeah. It's, I I just think, you know, these are the kinds of things that people don't realize are happening, and you know, if you're putting it in the newsletter, may as well just let people know.
Yeah, I I will say that I think, you know, once these blue letters go out, we'll have a a rush of people immediately, and those are the ones that you can tell genuinely, oh, it slipped my mind, or I forgot.
Yeah.
Or hadn't realized I had to pay it or something, and then as you go further on. It's a, you you see people that are on this every year.
Okay. So we'll put out more notices this year, we'll see what happens next year, and uh if it's still increasing, then we'll think of, you know, putting in a.
Rob, do you see the number, how many people?
Okay, alright, thank you.
It doesn't give you the numbers.
Yeah, I was just looking for a count.
Alright, to move to the uh.
So now we um we're on to our consent agenda, resolution. Okay. Do you want me to? Do you wanna start?
I'm.
So just make sure that it's as amended.
Yeah, I move to adopt um the items one through ten as this on the amended consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy five cents. And twenty twenty three expenditures totaling twenty four thousand two hundred and ninety two dollars thirty two cents, and twenty twenty four expenditures totaling two hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty six dollars and forty eight cents. Listed on summary pre-check writing, report and detail vote for detailed reports all dated March first, twenty twenty four, checks will be issued to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the promotion of Jordan Foley from the position of fourth grade police officer to police sergeant in the Newcastle Police Department with the annual salary of one hundred and forty two thousand eight hundred and thirty seven two thousand seventy two dollars and three cents. Effective March sixth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Adriana Brill Torres for the position of labor within the Department of Public Works water unit and at the annual salary of fifty one thousand two hundred and forty six dollars and ninety seven cents. Effective March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adopt the local law to amend chapter one hundred and sixteen of the code of the town of Newcastle concerning the senior citizen real property tax exemption. And chapter uh one hundred and nineteen of the code of the town of Newcastle concerning real property tax exemption for persons with disabilities and limited incomes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And of course, I'm on, I'm on you.
Alright, I move to adopt local law to amend chapter seventy two, including town of Newcastle concerning senior citizen exemption regarding reconstruction charges.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm making close to today's town board work session, returning, now second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now returned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.